Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Smithtown Planning Board is now in session.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We thank you. Alex?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda this evening, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Under Part 1, Item 1, 2011-01 All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item 2, 2012-04 Storybook Homes. Item 3, 2012-02 Carlson Associates. Item 4, 2009-05 FB4 Realty. Item 5, 773 Scholar Estates. Item 6, 288 Olivia Estates. And under Part 2, Item 7, 2010-06 KVC Holdings. Item 8, Case 911A Glenhill Northern. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Thank you. Is anybody in the audience here to be heard on the items to be adjourned? Hearing none, a motion?
Motion to adjourn the matters that were just read.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part 3, Item 9, is a performance bond extension for 1031A Woodlawn Platt. The applicant requests to retroactively extend the performance bond approval for a period of two years to end on May 27, 2015, in order to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for this two-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on May 7, 2003. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $9,988 was approved by the Board and subsequently signed by the Chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the Town Board accepted the performance bond on May 27, 2003. The fifth extension of performance bond approval for this performance bond expired on May 27, 2013. The applicant submitted a performance bond extension application on April 25, 2013, to the Planning Department, and the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The applicant indicated that construction has not yet begun. The Engineering and Highway Departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request and have determined that the bond amount is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. The Traffic Safety Department has no comment. Planning has performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision and determined that construction has not yet begun on the public improvements or the one proposed dwelling. Therefore, the Planning Department has no objection to the request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Woodlawn Platt 1031A for a period of two years to expire on May 27, 2015.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak on this application? Would you give your name and address?
My name is Christopher Thomason. My address is 5 Equine Lane in St. James, and I have the affidavit posted.
Would you give that to the clerk, please? Wait, wait, we have just one moment, please. One more moment. You have any objections there to the application as it's been put in for your extension?
No, I do not.
Okay. Members of the Board, any questions? A motion for the approval of the performance bond for Woodlawn Platt.
In the matter of Woodlawn Platt #1031A, I move that we adopt the resolution as reg in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. We thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part 3, Item 10, is the request of two applicants to waive the condition of approval in 1084 Xena Estates. This was heard before the Board on June 19 and adjourned for an onsite inspection by the Board. The Planning Department's recommendation has not changed. I believe we have a letter in correspondence from Lot Number 1. I believe the applicant of Lot Number 2 is here with an alternative proposal, and I don't believe the applicant from Lot Number 3 is present.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this application? Hearing none? Give your name and address, please.
Hello. Anthony Intantoli, 43 Mildred Court, in Wisconsin. I reside at Lot Number 2 as part of Xena Estates. My understanding, based on what has just been cited, is that the Planning Board will not approve either a removal of the 10-foot planting screen or a reduction in the 10-foot planting screen. Is that correct?
We haven't discussed it yet with the...
That's what he just mentioned.
That was his recommendation.
That was his recommendation.
Ah, okay.
Not our decision.
I stand corrected.
Okay.
I'll sit down.
All right. Members of the Board, have you finished your onsite?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opinions?
It's a very difficult application, balancing both sides. We have to take into consideration that people should be able to use their property as they wish to a point while balancing the fact that the other gentleman purchased his property relying on this buffer. So I'm a little torn on this one, and I think perhaps we need some additional information.
Well, if there's going to be a modification or some action on the buffer, then obviously the main question is what comes next. And perhaps what we can do is give the applicant, who's here, and perhaps his next-door neighbor, who is not here, the opportunity to come forward with some proposals that we can consider that if we modify it, this is what we are willing to do.
I share my colleague's feelings. I believe that eliminating the buffer would be inappropriate after an onsite inspection on all three properties. You do as well, Adam?
I agree with that. Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah, to eliminate it entirely, when traveling through the Lot Number 1, I felt that the deck in the back was fairly close to the property line as it is. The line was moved from what was originally intended, so eliminating the buffer entirely, I think, would be kind of harsh to that owner. I'm not necessarily averse to some modification, but eliminating it entirely would really leave the property line right up against his property fence, no buffer, no trees, no landscaping, no sound buffer, anything like that at all.
The one thing that I have heard there in the discussion of this is that they want no structure within 10 foot of the property line, that that was the thing that was most there, most people had done the onsite had considered. They would consider some modification of the buffer if you want to present it there with some type of a plan there for us to review. Are you interested in that? I don't know about your...
You want to go back out to the mic?
I don't know about your other, your neighbor, if he agrees to the same thing.
Unfortunately, my neighbor could not be here. He's currently away on vacation with his family. I'm going to speak on my behalf. I know essentially what he's informed me and what he would like, and essentially, we would like the same thing. Now, I completely understand if the Planning Board has decided that they will not completely remove the buffer. I understand that. I'm okay with that. I would be willing to hear from the Board what a potential solution would be as far as modification of that buffer. So before I present to you my action plan, I want a final answer from the Board as to what your plan is, and I may tell you what I may have in mind as a secondary alternative.
That's not how it works.
It doesn't work that way.
I think procedurally, the ball is in your court.
Well, my understanding is that the decision was going to be made by several Board members, or the entire Board, on this issue. So I'm waiting to hear what that decision is.
I think what we're telling you is that we are not going, we are considering not making a decision tonight.
I see.
Giving you and your neighbor an opportunity to come forward with some plans as to what you would do if there was a modification, what type of modification you were wishing, and then we would, as a Board, consider that and then make a decision based on that.
Sure.
That's what I think everybody wants to do.
Yes.
Our role procedurally is one of review. You tell us what you'd like to do, and we'll let you know if we're comfortable with it, as opposed to us presenting you with a solution.
Sure. So the last time I was here, and last time we were at this hearing discussing this, I mentioned that I would be amenable, as would my neighbor, to a reduction in that buffer, whether it's a 2 feet, 3 feet, 5 feet. I think that is up for discussion, but I think we would certainly be happy with a reduction, which was mentioned earlier at the prior meeting. What is the Board's feeling on considering a reduction, as well as how many feet of a reduction would we be considering? That would be my question.
I think we need to see what you're proposing in order to give you an answer on that, and I think that's what the Board members want. We want to see what you want to do.
Okay.
So why don't you put together a proposal with your neighbor, submit it to the Planning Department, give us an opportunity to review it, and we'll give you a decision.
And I would suggest, in that proposal, you would incorporate what type of modification you would be willing to live with as part of your proposal.
Okay.
The one thing that every member on the Board agrees to is no structure within 10 foot of the property line.
So you mean to tell me that if I was considering as an alternative plan that I would take... So let's just assume that I would take the 10-foot buffer. The 10-foot buffer is these chairs right here, the property line where the fence is, as you guys have seen the onsite inspection, the fence is here, 10 feet out is right here, okay? So I would consider two things. One, I would consider 5-foot reduction, 10 feet to 5 feet in the buffer. And with that, we would reduce the buffer by 5 feet. There would be 5 feet from the fence to where the 5-foot line would be, and I would fill that completely with vegetation, trees, enough to give myself and Mr. Minto, who's sitting behind me, enough privacy for the both of us. I'm cool with that, and I think that's reasonable. And where I would put my shed would be, obviously, in front of the plantings. That would be alternative number one, or plan number one.
Let me stop you for a second to make sure I understand. We would reduce it from 10 to 5 feet?
Yep.
You would place the shed up against the 5-foot?
Yep.
Okay, so then you would be within the 10 feet using that 5 feet we've remediated?
Yes, if the buffer was reduced.
Are you sure, under the zoning ordinance, that you can put a shed that close to begin with?
Frank, how close can you put a shed to the property line?
It's 8 feet, basically. I'm checking that out right now. So it's regardless of...
Even applying for a variance wouldn't change that, correct?
Well, if the Board prohibited that with regard to that, you can't apply for a variance for that.
But you would not get any closer than 8 feet to begin with, we're checking.
Oh, this is a subdivision.
According to this document that I have from the town of Smithtown website, based on shed codes, one shed accessory building located in the rear yard may be 2 feet from the property line if it is less than 150 square feet and less than 10 feet in height.
And is that what you're planning, something less than 150 square feet and less than 10 feet in height?
Absolutely.
So put that in your recommendation, and we'll consider it.
So that would be option number one. Option number two...
Sir, I don't mean to cut you off, and you can keep going as long as you want, feel free, but we really want to see this all in writing, and we want to see that your neighbor concurs with you.
Okay.
I want to see what he has in mind for his side.
Okay.
He's not here now.
Sure.
But feel free to continue.
You're saying based on your...
This is becoming very challenging, but anyway.
We're not trying to be difficult.
No, I understand.
We are sympathetic as homeowners in Smithtown to what you're grappling with, but we're also sympathetic to the other gentleman whose rear yard is substantially shorter than yours. Doesn't mean something can't be done, but we really need you to propose. Now, if I understand what you prefaced your remarks with, if we were to give you the 5-foot remission, your adjacent owner on Mildred Court would be contented with that as well?
He's not here to speak, but I would assume he would be content, but we would have to have his presence as well, or get his statement on this.
Well, you started out by saying you know what he wants.
We would want the same thing. So if I had 5 feet, he would have 5 feet. If it was 3 feet, he would have 3 feet. My understanding is that we would be in agreement in getting the same thing.
Okay, got it.
Well, we also want to know what type of, what type of plantings you're going to do in there to establish that buffer. When, just let me get finished for a minute. When I was on the Board when this was first heard, there was no fence on the property line, all right? And I understand your reason for having a fence. Thing is that the buffer is, the buffer there of plantings is more than just the buffer for the fence. It's a buffer there to be able there to have the privacy for the applicant that lives off Alexander Avenue, his privacy, all right? Okay?
Absolutely. I certainly understand that. My second alternative plan would be, if the Board has decided that they would not remove or reduce the 10-foot buffer, what I would request or ask for would be that the Board would allow me to put the shed that I would like, of my choice and my size, within limitations that we discussed based on my initial application, to put a shed in the far-left rear part of the property, okay? Far away from any, from my neighbor's home, certainly not causing any obstruction at all, I would want to request that that shed be allowed to be placed within the 10-foot planting screen, and to the right, I would maintain a 10-foot planting screen all the way down.
Again, you don't misunderstand what we're saying. We're saying that we want to see what you and your neighbor want to put in, and then we'll make a decision. But it was not, as my discussion there with Board members, was that they were very cognate of the fact that this is a very, the size of your property versus the property there that you back on is such there that we want to make sure that the applicant from Alexander Avenue is not being infringed on any more than you want to be infringed on, okay?
Sure.
Mr. Intantoli, could you approach over? Bring the mic with you.
Sure.
When you say left and right, it can get very confusing. You're talking about wanting to place the shed within the planting area at what would be the southwest corner of your property?
Sure.
That's the furthest extreme from where he has his shed on the other side.
That would be the furthest extreme, sure.
So we're talking about the southwest corner, just so that we all understand.
Yeah, that would be the southwest corner here, and...
Let me move it over here so my fellow Board members can see.
Well, I know where he was.
I'm not sure if the others have the map.
Yeah, I know where he was.
We know where he was.
I want him to put it in black and white.
Sure.
And your neighbor's request also, and then we'll consider that, all right?
You got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if you wish to put, like you said, my one alternative or my other alternative, you want to do that, that's fine.
Give us as much as you can.
Give us as much as you can.
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Have a nice Fourth of July.
Want to establish a timeframe for this?
Before we do this, can I just add one item? We had a very similar issue with regard to Winwood Meadows in regard to a reduction in a required buffer. And I'm just mentioning this because whatever the Board wants, you may modify. But according to the town attorney, there's, once a buffer is established, to modify that buffer requires an amendment to the map itself, not a restrictive covenant. What I'm getting at is that we'll wait to see what the proposal may be, but you are going to get a letter from the town attorney to that effect. But I just want to advise the Board, once we see this proposal, the modification may require more legal paperwork than just a waiver from this Board.
And you'll put that in your recommendation, too?
That's correct. When we see whatever it has, we'll give you the assessment on that. But what happened was this Board on Winwood Meadows allowed a fence to be placed in there in the buffer area, and the town attorney said that the way you wrote that particular reduction requires an amendment to the map. And he came up with a suggestion about not doing an amendment to the map, and you're going to get that letter, and we're going to have that as a correction. So I will advise the Board, when we see this proposal, what that would entail from a legal point of view. This is...
Didn't Mr. King make that point in a different...
Yes, he did.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yes, he did.
Would it be, sorry, would it be mailed to you? Would it be presented at the next hearing?
If you could submit it to our office, and then we will just make copies and distribute it to the Board.
And when would be the next hearing for discussion?
Well, we have...
Whenever you get it done.
Well, how much time do you think you need to get it done?
I'll write it up for you tonight. I'll have it in your mailbox tomorrow. We can drive it over.
How about your neighbor? When is he coming back from vacation?
When he gets back from vacation, it'll probably be in a week, but I can have it for you tomorrow.
Well, tomorrow's July 4.
I just want to put my shed in my backyard.
The main thing we want, both, because the waivers were originally granted for both of you, the buffers, okay? So we want both, both applicants here to be on record what they want and where they want it, okay?
Very well.
On their respective properties. We can't just hear from you, we need to hear from him, too.
I certainly understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't think we need to put a timeframe on it. It's whenever he and his neighbor get it, get it together.
And it'll be on the next meeting after that?
Yeah.
With the Board's permission, I believe the applicant has an attorney. I should notify him that we...
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
You mean the other gentleman here?
Yes.
Would he like to say anything? I don't know if you want to give him the opportunity?
Do you wish that he speak on the app? I know your attorney's not here, but do you want to speak?
Yes.
Just give your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Minto, 195 Alexander Avenue. I'm the owner of Lot 1. Members of the Board, just to clarify my situation, I'm a licensed land surveyor. I work for John Minto Land Surveying, and John Minto has a client, Frank Fridley, who developed this subdivision. Consequently, I bought Lot 1 after it was completed, so I just wanted the Board to know that that's strictly, totally involved in the mapping process. Now, during the course of this subdivision, the property line was perpendicular to the north and south lines, allowing for a 50-foot rear yard for Lot 1, which is the lot I purchased. At the 11th hour, the subdivider moved the property line at a diagonal line which all went out and saw, which created the 35-foot rear yard to the lot I purchased. You guys made of the requirement, a requirement, that at the 10-foot buffer be established because of that movement, because the line was placed at 35 foot. So for us to be standing here today, and my neighbor is saying they would like this or they would like that, contradicts the whole spirit of what you guys decided. You said, okay, if you're going to place the line here, there must be a 10-foot screen. So today, if we abandon this screen or reduce it, are we going to move the line back? Or you guys have a double standard. Today, you have to have the screening, tomorrow you don't. I don't understand that, and that's particularly why I have an attorney here representing me, and I hope we'll have the opportunity to take this stand, because my attorney couldn't be present. When we see this plan and this planting screen that's supposed to be 10-foot wide and have a specific layout, which has been abused, if you looked at the conditions of Lot 3, that has a single row of nine abrevieties, which the lot called for approximately 26, double-planted, 10-foot wide, I hope you guys have your eyes open and appreciate what should be there, what was there, and what isn't there. And that's what I bought. I bought that protection, not something reduced, not a shed, not a swing set. I have nothing against my neighbors, but it's my backyard, and that's basically all I have to say.
Your attorney will definitely get an opportunity to see what's ever, whatever's submitted. We're not making any decisions tonight, so...
I appreciate that.
Okay.
And yes, Frank, we don't have any problem with you notifying your attorney when it's going to be on again, right? That's okay.
As soon as we receive it, I'll wait for the Board's advice, but I'll make a recommendation as to what is the most viable one, so both parties have ample time to prepare a case for whatever it is. I mean, if we receive something not tomorrow, which is July 4, but on Friday, we'll immediately give that to the other attorney, and I won't see any reason why we can't have it for the next meeting. However, if there's more than that in terms of the delay, then, of course, I'll advise the Board with what my recommendation is.
And we need comment from the town attorney on the other issue.
Yes, well, I have to bring it to the town attorney and show, and then I'll advise the Board as to what the legal procedure would be.
Okay.
And we still have the other applicant who's not here, who has to submit his proposal.
That's correct.
If they want to get together and, you know, submit them together, that's fine.
Well, I think what the Board's saying is you want to see both properties.
At the same time, yeah, absolutely.
We want to know what each one wants to do with his property.
Okay, that's what I, I understood that, that's what you wanted.
Now, Frank, when you said before a modification would require more legal paperwork, would that be by us or by the applicant?
By the applicant. It depends upon how it is done and what you are requesting. And in Winwood Meadows' case, what it came down to was that they were accidentally placed a fence within the scenic easement. And what the town attorney recommended, what we put together the resolution, a reduction of the easement, and the town attorney basically said, no, that would require a modification of the map. Since the applicant only requested a fence, then you are giving permission to put the fence in the scenic easement, which would not modify the scenic easement. That's the nature of the game. Once an easement is placed on a map, like a scenic easement, if you are going to reduce it, officially reduce it, as opposed to maybe allow what was requested, a shed in the easement or whatever it may be, then it may require a modification of the map itself, which is more entailed in terms of, that's actually a refiling of the same map. It is not a simple procedure. That was the town attorney who advised us of that, and after reading the law with him, I happen to agree, he was correct.
And we're going to get a letter on that, correct?
You will, I want to see what the applicant's proposing.
Okay.
And then we're going to try to minimize the amount of paperwork, but if it, I have to advise you what it's going to entail, and the applicant what's going to entail.
Right.
I don't know yet till we see what the applicant's proposing.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
The house on Lot Number 1 is 35 feet from the applicant's property, so it's a very small yard. Was this covenant put on because of the size of that? Most properties usually have a bigger yard, and is that the reason why they put this stipulation on?
What actually happened here in this particular case was that... There was an existing house on Lot Number 1, and it was a smaller house, and the builder wanted to build larger-than-average homes on lots 2 and 3. And the lot, the house size is proportional to the size of the lot. So in order to build a larger home, larger than what was required, we're dealing, you know, the quarter-acre lot, for example, you're allowed to build only a 2,500-square-foot home. I don't know what the size of this home is, but I'm going to, from what I could see, it looks like it's around 35 to 4,000 square feet in size. It could be larger, but, hmm, okay. Regardless, was the developer wanted larger lots in order to build a larger home on the lot and not require a variance? And that was, that's why they shifted the line.
That was part of the variance, to have to shift the line and also to put that stipulation in, that covenant in, that they had to have that 10-foot buffer?
Yes.
Well, by putting the fence on the back of the property, that doesn't change the buffer zone requirements at all.
No, it does not.
Okay. All right. It's up to you, sir, and your neighbor, and see what you can present there to the Planning Department, and then we'll review it, all right? Okay. Thank you very much, and have a nice Fourth of July. Both of you. Okay.
We need a motion. A motion for an adjournment.
All right, a motion for adjournment.
In the matter of Xena Estates, #1084, I move that we adjourn the matter pending receipt of proposals by the applicants and further comment from possibly the town attorney and the Planning Department to be recounted at a date after, sometime after the proposals are received.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part III, Item 11, is a street tree waiver, number 1092 Winston's Run. This was also heard on June 19th and adjourned for an onsite inspection by the board, and you do not believe the applicant is here today.
Was the -- is the applicant there aware that we were having a meeting tonight on this?
Somebody spoke to him today, yes.
Is anybody from the Winston Run application in the audience tonight? No? Okay. We'll -- a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn Winston's Run pending receipt of proof from the applicant that the residents on the block do not wish to have trees planted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Now, on -- we have some correspondents, Frank, from Bauer Fritz. And it appears that the -- that if we can't come up with something, that if they can't come up with something by July the 17th, they want to put on a request for an adjournment. All right?
It's no problem.
I think they're looking for an extension.
An extension.
An extension, I understand.
Yes. If they can't get the map in to be signed by then, they'll need an extension before the approval expires.
Any other questions by the members of the board?
I don't know. Are you here for any particular reason?
You two ladies in the back.
We had read in Newsday that you discussed 347 work that you announced up in this kind of highway, so I was wondering what was being discussed.
I saw that, too, and I was wondering the same thing. I don't know why they put that there.
That was the previous town board meeting. That was last Thursday.
It was a town board meeting.
It was a town board meeting.
I think it was a misprint, ma'am.
Oh, this was in yesterday, it was in Tuesday, Newsday.
Yeah.
And I was wondering why you'd be meeting before July, actually.
This is not the town board, this is the planning board.
It said here tonight.
But the town board meets here. It was an evening meeting of the town board, but it was last Thursday. I apologize. Newsday had it wrong. Okay.
Surprised?
Okay.
Well, you came down here for nothing, but have a happy Fourth of July, okay? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.